From Mayor Todd Pohl beside him. Please remove your hats, turn all cell phones and papers off. If I include any there, it's heartbreaking, you're good. All right, if we'll come to order. Let's please, we want to have our prayer and pledge. Commissioner Russell Lee Barry, if you would, please lead us in our clear.
All right, I love praying. Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thank you for many blessings. Ask you to continue to bless us whatever be in your will, Lord. We just thank you for our country, our freedom, Lord. We thank you for the progress that our country has openly made in the last few days, Lord. Just thank you to this county, Lord. Just ask you to be with this body as we can endure the things ahead of us, Lord, to give us the wisdom and the ability to get over the hardships that we face today, Lord. Just be with us as we go through this meeting, make the decisions. Be with us, asking to forgive us what we may be, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Vice Chair, Mr. Mayor, would you please?
Place flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated, please. All right, we'll come to order. Welcome to all our guests we have tonight. It's good to see you. Full court. Good to see you. All right, we'll move into roll call. Madam Kirk, if you would, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Buckner.
Here.
Lee Barry.
Here.
Gatler.
Here.
Gilman.
Here.
Brantham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Kinnamore.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Same.
Here.
Vicker.
Here.
Wayne.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Yeah, well, the agenda items, invite this agenda. Nobody on the agenda. All right, if you'll look at your packet. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Uh, Phil, your packet you do, of course, uh, you have your minutes from last session, from last morning. You've had a chance to those over. See if there's any corrections, any amendments to those. If not, we entertain motion to approve the minutes of this county.
So move.
All right, motion being made, second, to approve the minutes from a regular session October the 4th. In discussion on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor, say the vote is same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. Motion carries. All right, they are approved. All right, now we have our numbers. I think we have a desk before you.
Somebody would be great.
All right, so move. That's your second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any questions on the numbers? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say the same, same.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we have our numbers. And reports, we'll move into the county reports, which, let's have Superintendent Swift, if you could, please, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. I have three items to address. One of them, first one is a court report, second one is work proposal, and the third one is a budget amendment. Uh, the court report and work proposal, we were a little behind on that, so that's going to break into getting, looking to get cleared. You guys have any questions, feel free to ask. If not, I'm not entertaining a motion to approve.
Second, motion's been made, second. Any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say the same, same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same.
All right, the only other thing I have left is the budget amendment. This is for our five-year average, we underestimated our five-year average. This is no money being transferred, this is just a reflection of, we need to put seven thousand dollars, raise it up to seven thousand dollars more so we don't lose our state money. So this is the lead money, and we just underestimated it. To correct it, we just have to bring it up to the seven thousand, add seven thousand to it, and it'll be correct.
Yeah.
That way we don't lose county and state money.
Okay. Motion being made, second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any questions, Commissioner Superintendent Swift, on the budget amendment? Seeing none, I plead this district's voluntary roll call, would you please, Madam Kirk, if you would, please, Madam Kirk.
Mayor.
Yes.
Buckner.
Yes.
Lee Barry.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Brantham.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Kinnamore.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
All right, thank you, commissioners, uh, that's all okay?
All right, thank you, Superintendent Swift, thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, next we have, in fact, the rule of terms for our planning commission. Y'all have that, go back. Okay, I got it, all right. Yes, for any more, uh, what is the rule of due terms for the planning commission, and for each card? All right, is there a motion to approve when our planning commission is approved? Second, was been made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say the same, same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. All right. All right, well, thank you. We'll move to skip that for the, on the agreement this time. And we will move to our budget amendments, if you would, please. Vice Chair, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, seven budget amendments tonight. Uh, budget committee did not meet the requirements. Uh, I'm going to address amendments one, three, four, and seven. Uh, first, uh, number one, county clerk, uh, devoting employee health insurance, three thousand. Credit to travel, three thousand. Uh, reasoning office employees enrolled in federal education to must attend classes in, uh, Franklin, Tennessee for certification. It was failed with budget in the original budget, but it is a line out of transfer. Any questions on one? Uh, number two, the censure of property reappraisal, uh, devoting educational incentive, seven seventy-five. State retirement, one thousand, one twenty-five. Employee health, one thousand. Uh, credit to end services staff development, nine hundred. And credit to gasoline, two thousand. For eight debit credit ballots of two thousand, nine hundred. Again, that's line of transfer to the budget. Uh, number three, local health department. Uh, devoting the fund balance, seven thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars. Credit to state retirement, seven thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars. Uh, need justification for the change, the mission navigator has TCRS through the county. Uh, this position is a hundred percent reimbursable from the state. This will be passed on Monday, the end of the year. Uh, number four, the workhouse, devoting, uh, reserve account, one thousand. Credit to building improvements, one thousand. And that's moving money from a reserve account for, uh, alien data systems. But it is coming from that reserve again. And then number seven, uh, the workhouse, devoting a reserve fund, twenty fifteen thousand, eight fifty. Credit to building improvements, one hundred fifteen thousand, eight fifty. And that is replacement of air conditioner units at the criminal justice center, which could be used by that reserve fund. So any other questions on amendments one, three, four, and number seven? If not, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that they would be approved, if ready.
Second.
Yes, sir, motion's been made, second. Any questions, please? Seeing none, we'll move into roll call. Please, Madam Kirk, if you would, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
Buckner.
Yes.
Lee Barry.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Brantham.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Kinnamore.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Okay, now amendments five and six, which are separate, concerning, uh, money's being moved, uh, due to the lawsuit. Number five, general fund, uh, devoting the fund balance, four million, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Crediting, uh, plan's larger fees, four million, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. And number six, miscellaneous, that's devoting, devoting the general, uh, fund. I think that comes actually backwards, Mayor. I think it should be devoting debt service.
Yes, it is.
One million. Yeah, the visitors reverse those.
Yes.
The debit credit, that's devoting the debt service cash, one billion, and crediting the general fund, one billion.
If there's no questions on those two. Mr. Chairman, do you entertain a motion? Yes, sir, is your motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Make sure you have those correct changes that would be to debit the debt service. All right. We need roll call.
Mayor.
Yes.
Buckner.
Yes.
Lee Barry.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Brantham.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Kinnamore.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Lanier.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir. Vice Chair, Commissioner, thank you for what you do, sir. All right, we have, uh, I have moved this down, um, uh, want to say some things here about the industrial board. Uh, we've revitalized the industrial board, I think, they're doing a great job. Uh, I've been in Nashville, um, with some of them, and they're, uh, they're, they're learning new things, of course, in the state, how to make the presentations. Um, and they're, they're putting together plans, sending down codes, and they're working very closely with the state of Tennessee. I'm very proud of what they do. Uh, we have one that's, uh, well, we have to, they're wanting to move one of these here on, if y'all have this, with industrial board. One of the members wants to be moved down to fill an unexpected turn, uh, from Mr. Clayton. And then, uh, we want to reappoint Mr. Ray, Mr. Barry Stevens, and then, um, add Mr. Gerald Shelton and Mr. Russell Shelton, um, industrial board. I've talked to them, and they're willing to serve, and at this time, I'm entertaining a motion to accept.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify the same, same.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion passed. All right, we'll move into our public forum here for our gentleman. Before I do that, Chair, should we add anything about the, uh, we got some surplus property.
Yes.
Gentlewoman, present the, is that gentleman? Said these items are one of the services that cannot be used. You just want to move them to. You have surplus. Y'all have that, they are surplus property.
Yes.
Can I have a chance to? Try it right there. Okay, I don't want to read that, that was a commercial, Washington, and they moved after the repair and whatnot, so. Uh, is there a motion to entertain these items to surplus?
Somebody would be great.
Second, sir. Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. All right, motion carries, please. All right, now we move into our public forum, please, for the general. And, uh, we have one that signed up here, and it is, uh, Man Sergeant, Mr. Spencer. Sergeant Spencer. Welcome, Sergeant. Free to say your sergeant, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, Colonel Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Here was, under missions, elected officials, and interview. I give the signal, the mission from the pen of the late Sergeant Tyrone Adams. With their request, named bridge, over quickly, located, located on Murphy Lane in White, Tennessee, in his honor. Name this bridge for Sergeant Tyrone Adams on Murphy Lane in Whiteville, Tennessee. Will serve with memory and honor his military accomplishments in the community in the United States. I was his team leader, squad leader, team sergeant, and his first sergeant, in the fourth one-one-seven, McEnroe Infantry Company, Tennessee National Guard. He was our only personnel driver, therefore, I confirmed it could stand in the military. He was a graduate of the Tennessee Military Academy, Missouri, Tennessee. He served in the tenth government National Guard, involved in fifteen years. During our military training at the Monmouth Desert in Fort Hills, California, Sergeant Tyrone Adams was responsible for how their team of McEnroe Infantry Company received a prestigious award of part of the Henry III players, the only National Guard team to receive the award at that time, in nineteen ninety-four. His the team leader was second lieutenant, Warren A. Ross, who is now, is seventy-seven, at New Jersey, but in Tennessee Army National Guard. Who was mentioned by Sergeant Tyrone Adams in U.S. Troop. I hail the veterans for his family, his new, his elementary school teacher, his classmate, his church family, to verify his character. Sergeant Adams, Tyrone Adams, was a conflict by trade. During ice storm in ninety-four, he helped many families in the bayou, carpet their roof, damaged by the ice storm. But they were waiting for that insurance company to respond. His continued support, supporting his community, known as medical, because his death on August the ninth, twenty twenty-five. Again, having the whistle, the name agreed over decree, on Murphy Lane in Whiteville, Tennessee, Harwood County, to serve in memory of honor, the military career of Sergeant Tyrone Adams. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Sergeant Major? As we celebrate, uh, I'm gonna say this better today, and Sergeant Major, I just want to tell you something. Thank you. All right, Commissioner for the industry, Senator Blake, recognize, please, Mayor.
I try and ask you, uh, thank you, Sergeant, I mean, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
First of all, before I make this, um, motion, I would like his family and his friends and, uh, the church members to stand. And as we can see, Tyrone, um, is well represented, he's a, uh, he's a good person, he's my teammate, and, um, you know, he passed a few months back, and he was just a honorable person to the community, and he served everybody. So with that being said, I would like to make the motion to, uh, name the bridge, I put my glasses on, so I can see. In Whiteville, Tennessee, on Murphy Lane, Clear Creek, located on Murphy Lane in Whiteville, Tennessee, in the honor of Sergeant Tyrone Adams.
Second. That's second. Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. Thank you, motion passed, second. And again, thank you to all our veterans that are here. Uh, we appreciate your service very much, thank you. Sergeant Major, how that works, we, uh, we will, uh, put together that resolution and send it from the county. That will go up to the state of Tennessee, be presented on the floor, and then they will vote on that and send it back here for ratification of that resolution. So that's how that will work, so, um, we can get that together, and I will sign it, and then send it off to the state, so. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, y'all. Let me, uh, let me address just a couple of things. Oh, is anything, Commissioner, would you like to say something, Mike? All right, uh, just real quick, I want to give a, just a real quick update on our CBEG grant we did, uh, received just last week. Uh, notification on that, that we will be, uh, that we are approved for our amendments. We've been working on that for over a year, so we, we are getting that. Uh, we'll start the procurement process as soon as those, uh, papers are signed and sent back in, and, um, and that is hopefully within the next couple of weeks, maybe three weeks. So that will start the procurement process at that time, so, uh, just want to say we're very grateful for that, been working on that for over a year. Our three-star as well, uh, we've been approved for that, um, so we're going to work on that, and there's so many A and Bs, and then there's a, a lift, a retrofit lift for, uh, for an amendments as well, uh, around sixty-five thousand. There's different rounds on the three-star grants, so that's going to be in the first round. On the second round, we will be, uh, asking for a heart monitor and more A and Bs. So three-star, it's a continuation, at a certain deadline, so at certain phases that they go in, so I just wanted to address that. And, uh, recognize that this month is also Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and Men's Health Month. Um, I don't know if any of you have experience with Alzheimer's, or, or what that does for the, for the families and the characters, uh, of the, uh, patients that are diagnosed with that. We have a, uh, person here in our county that couldn't be here tonight, Sarah Stenner, uh, she's the only coordinator in West Tennessee. And we have her here in this, in this town, we're very proud of that, and the families that she, uh, she helps to find services for, um, when you are diagnosed. There's a lot of things that go, of course, uh, planning as well, uh, she can have good financial resources with a family that can plan those things out. As you know, that it is, um, devastating to be diagnosed with that, so. Um, next week, we're going to sign a proclamation, uh, about that, City and I, we're going to do a joint proclamation about Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And we will have also a group and cutting at our health department next week, uh, because there's been some renovations there. The, um, just a couple of real quick things, um, I want to address before I move into this next item. Our unemployment rate has dropped from six point three in July to the, um, the figure that we had in August to five point one, and that is from the labor force development board. There's also sent in some information about self-service kiosks, where you can go in and renew your driver's license and handgun permit. Now, this does not do the real ID, where you'd have to go to a different facility to do that, but it does take pictures, and we're setting up a time that they can come in and schedule a site visit here at the courthouse. That will help, um, people that need to renew. And I just want to let you know here before, before we go into this next item, uh, of course, we're going into next week is our Thanksgiving week, and I want us to be thankful for what we have. Not for what others have, but what, what we have, so I want us to be mindful of that. Uh, family, uh, different ones may not have family, uh, it involves loved ones at this time, so be, uh, be mindful of that. And maybe take a place to somebody that you know that's elderly, or somebody that you can help, you know, we all want to be good stewards and to help, so be mindful of that. And maybe take a place to somebody that you know that's elderly, or somebody that you can help, you know, we all want to be good stewardesses to help, so be mindful of that. Thanksgiving is a time to celebrate, to be together, but some people don't have that, so just be mindful. All right, we're moving into our next, uh, very briefly, our report, uh, Mr. Conder, he's not here, he could not be here, um, at this time. Give a quick update on that. Okay. Uh, have another, uh, a continuation, um, of a lawsuit, Perry versus Harden County, uh, and the sheriff's office, uh, is for a lead bank, and comp time calculations, on planning to still deploy, uh, at present time, and it's calculations for that. And, um, we have asked attorneys to, of course, work these issues out, and be the cause of what's, what's involved here, and, um, get this worked out, very time in a manner, so. Saying none, just know you'd like to say, everybody just would like to say on that issue?
Yes, just want to let everybody know that the point is that, if they would like to come, talk to the county, they can come talk to the leader here in the county commission, so we can try to settle these lawsuits.
Yeah. County has been under, uh, a barrage of lawsuits for the last several years, and, um, we have to move past this, and so the county can grow, we have to move on. We have to, um, work these issues out, and, um, lawsuits hurt everybody, not just the people sitting up here, it hurts the citizens, it hurts everything about the county, that you want to see grow, and the county that you love. And the only one that makes any money or wins is a group of lawyers. Next time we stop that, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say on that, this, at this time. And our next commission will be, uh, unless there's a special call meeting, will be in January. And is there any other business that we need to bring forward, a permission at this time?
I like.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Ryan, I apologize, yes, sir.
I was talking to a good friend the other day, and he talked about losing loved ones, he lost his son last month, Tommy Wood, he's in the Sheriff's Department. He had nothing negative to say, he's uplifting, very Christian man, you know, he's, he's a patriot. But he wanted me to stress out tonight, that the appreciation he had for the nine-one-one call, to the swift service of getting an ambulance, to getting, by the police department there, and the church department. He just wanted me to let everybody know that he appreciated, they was warm, they was courteous, they were very professional, they all worked together, because his son's a, a big, big man. And it took several to get him, uh, out of the house, and they all worked well as a team. And he just wanted me to tell everybody, sheriff, and city of Oliver, ambulance department, nine-one-one, he really appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate that, a lot of times, we don't hear the positive, and, and we appreciate that, appreciate you bringing that forward, thank you very much. Is there any other business we need to, yes, sir, Commissioner?
Uh, uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioner, the, um, pickup truck that's at the EMS building, I believe we talked about this some time ago, uh, for the rescue squad, um, I believe they're in need of a vehicle, and it's just sitting there in the, uh, EMS building, could we look into, uh, somehow provide them with, uh, with that vehicle?
Yeah, would that particularly be you?
They approached me about that last minute, and I made a phone call on Monday of the next week, and Sunday, the other vehicle had gone out, and they were using that truck. So I dropped, I said, in the subject, they need to look for something that, because they were using that vehicle. So we need to look in another direction for the rescue squad.
Are any of these that you gotta get rid of, John, are they something that can be used?
No, they're, they're not, they're not gonna be suitable for that. Uh, usually when we get rid of a vehicle, it's non-repairable, um, but I have, I have nothing really that, that they could use.
I thought at one time, didn't you give, give, give a vehicle?
I tried.
Oh, it didn't work out?
I tried.
Okay, ma'am, we thank you very much, and we support our emergency services, our, um, and of course, our volunteer service, rescuing squad, and what they've done for the last forty-plus years, and the good job that they've done, and all the services, we appreciate that, too. So, um, we're trying to put, put together a plan, and trying to help do something along the line, so, uh, if there's any other, not any other business, I'll entertain a motion, good, Sheriff?
I'll move with Sheriff.
Second. All right, all in favor? Go on, Sheriff.